Good afternoon and welcome to the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners Water/Wastewater Budget Workshop. I want to welcome everyone here again and turn it over to Mr. Merrill.
Good afternoon. So, as you said, this is a workshop on our water/wastewater system. We're going to take a very comprehensive look at our water and wastewater system. And what you'll see, the presentation freely falling into two major categories. One category relates to recommendations that will ensure continued high-quality service to our customers that's sustainable. The other is to ensure the continued financial integrity of our system. We've managed to keep rates low for quite some time and we're at the point where, as we look forward, we will have some rate recommendations that will be in the area of increasing rates and fees just to do those two things I mentioned. Ensure there's good, consistent service and financial integrity. Then there are some other recommendations that are more of a policy matter which are not, I would say, not critical. They certainly are important to the system, but they're not critical in terms of service and financial integrity. So that would be in the areas, say, of septic tank conversion and so forth. So it's really those two pieces that we're going to look at today. We're not looking for any particular vote. It is a workshop, but we obviously want to get a sense of direction because with rate increases and changes that will allow us to then go forward and bring back actual recommendations and documents for you to vote on. So with that, I will turn it over to George Cassidy.
Mr. Cassidy, good afternoon.
Thank you, Mike. Good afternoon, Board and Chairman Miller. Thank you for this opportunity to provide you an overview of the Public Utilities Department. The plan today is really to give you a high flyover. What is it that we do? Tell you a little bit about our goals for service for our customers, the challenges that we have today and tomorrow going forward. Equal to that, we're really working hard to be efficient at what we do. So I'm going to do kind of a broad brush overview of some of the efficiencies that we brought into our operation. And at the conclusion, we're going to talk a little bit about our budget, what those impacts are currently and going forward, and we'll lay out some options for us to consider. So, what is our pledge? Our department commitment to service is to provide a high-quality drinking water, collect and treat wastewater, distribute reclaimed water to our customers. We want to do it in a reliably fashion, a safe fashion. We want to minimize environmental impacts along the way. So that brings us to our real core services. We do three things and we want to do it really well. We want to provide water, again. We're going to collect and treat the wastewater that's generated. And we're going to return that water back to the community in the form of irrigation water. Commercially, it's used for cooling purposes. And we do a really nice job of that and been doing it for quite some time. In fact, we've got one of the largest reclaimed water systems in the country. You've seen this slide before when Stormwater gave their workshop. And it's an evolving understanding of a one-water approach. If you remember back in our school days, we talked a little bit about the water cycle. And the old-fashioned water cycle was rain fell from the sky. It fell on the ground and into ponds and rivers and lakes and streams. It went into the ground. And then it evaporated back up into the clouds again. And so that simple structure has really, this is version 2.0. And what we want to do is we want to really recognize the interrelationship between the stormwater element, that we need to take care of the stormwater element before it percolates into the ground, becomes part of ultimately what is our drinking supply that we pick up. We want to protect our drinking supply. When we then manage the wastewater side of the drinking supply, we need to do that in a responsible manner so that it goes back in the ecosystem and the cycle begins again. One of the elements of this one-water approach, and you're going to hear it more and more in the coming years, and that is reclaimed water is ultimately going to become a viable source of potable water. Mr. Merrill has been really strong in his messaging to us that we need a sustainable county. So whatever the services are that we provide, we need to be sustainable doing it. And we thought long and hard about a sustainable utility. What does that mean? So we want to make sure that we're investing in the current assets that we have. We are a big utility. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a couple of slides. And so we need to reinvest in our assets to make sure that they're in good shape and they can continue to provide the kind of services that we want to provide. Ensuring sustainability for capacity for current and future customers. We need to make sure that we have resilient systems capable of treating what we have and also bringing on those new customers in the future. Leveraging the existing infrastructure. This is something near and dear my heart. We have gaps in our service. And I would like for us to take an opportunity to look at connecting those in-between areas. There's no higher efficiency available to us than filling in the gaps. If you're running systems farther and farther, it's harder to take care of those. Evaluate and implement technology. We're going to be on the leading edge of what are those technologies available to make us better at what we do. And we certainly want to take advantage of any reduction in energy consumption. We are singularly, if you added all of our plants together, if you added all of our facilities together, we're probably singularly Tampa Electric's biggest customer. We spend between $8 and $9 million a year in electric costs. Anything that we can do to curb that is good for our customers, good for our operation. Protecting health and safety, that's probably one of our number-one mottos. We need to protect public health and safety. And we also need to provide a safe working environment for our customers or for our employees. An overview of our service area. So here's our county. In the middle is the City of Tampa. You'll see that in that peach color along with Temple Terrace. The City of Tampa and Temple Terrace provide a geographic divide, really, between our northwest service area and our south-central. We run effectively two utilities because of that. I've identified our wastewater plants, those are the little triangles, and our water plants, and those are the little blue squares on the map. That's where we have current capacity. Guiding principles for the utility. So if you go back 25 years or so, the utility struggled to meet its financial obligations. And so what was born of that time was a Blue Ribbon Committee that came forward and looked at how we operated fundamentally as a business. And we have been very fortunate to have this foundation of good business practices. The first is financial integrity. We need to make sure that we're operating our business as a good business. We need to make sure it's a sustainable business, that we've got credit worthiness along the way. Fairness of rates and revenues. We want to make sure that the services that we provide are competitive in the area. It goes along the way, if you've got a really, really high cost of service, maybe residents go somewhere else because they want something more affordable. And our future customers. It was fundamental that growth pays for growth. That's been very important to us. And we accomplished that, we did accomplish that by two fees, if you will, or two charges. One of them was an impact fee. That was your reservation within a treatment plant. And attendant to that was an ongoing operating cost to make sure that we maintain that system in good operating order. And that was what was called an AGRF. It's an accrued guarantee revenue fee. During the recession and coming out of the recession, we drove that AGRF fee down to zero. It used to have, the charge was $1,945. That was a companion fee to when someone hooked up to our system. We took that to zero to help give a boost to the economy at the time, encourage that continued development. That's had an impact on us on our revenue side. And we'll talk a little bit more about that at the end. So going back to the financial integrity component of our guiding principles, we're in excellent financial state. We are AAA-rated utility. We're probably in the top couple percent in the country on that. Sustainability, talking about our asset renewal, keeping those assets in good operating order. We spend about $40 million a year, and that's a declining number on our current business model. And we should probably be at about $57 million. So you can see there's a little delta there with what we should be spending. And certainly capacity utilization. Within the financial integrity model, we want to make sure that we're using as much of our existing capacity as possible. Our revenue sources, we are an enterprise fund. We collect 100% of our operating funds from our customers for the services that we provide. And it's a pretty simple puzzle. It's monthly billings. It's impact fees for new connections. And then there's a miscellaneous fee bucket. That would be for setting a new meter. It might be a late fee. It might be some interest income from our rate stabilization fund. If you look at it in a pie format, the lion's share of that revenue stream is going to be our monthly billings, 88% of that on an annual basis. And you can see that the impact fee bucket and also the miscellaneous fees, 4% and 8% Fairness of rates and revenues. This is a chart of our surrounding brother and sister utilities. And we are right there in the lower middle at Hillsborough County at $86.25. And that's for a typical bill. If we were to look across these other utilities and look at 7,000-gallon usage for water, 7,000-gallon generation of wastewater, our current standing is less than the average. So again, going back to the fairness, we think that's a competitive rate. If you look at our customer growth across the last five years, and it's been pretty significant. We're growing by about 6,000 customers per year and have been doing that for the last five or six years. Without a lot of science applied, we've just taken that historical growth over the last five years and applied it going forward to show that we are a growth utility. There's nothing to indicate that it will slow down. So what are our rate pressures? What's causing pressure on our current rate system, our current revenue stream? Well, it's our operating expense growth. As we gain those 6,000 new customers, even though we're increasing our revenue stream from them, it's not covering 100% of our operating costs. As we purchase more water from Tampa Bay Water, we pay a larger attendant portion of the debt service that Tampa Bay Water has. We are now the largest purchaser of water from Tampa Bay Water. Total asset preservation, again, we're a big utility. We cover hundreds of square miles. We have $1.2 billion worth of assets. If you took our pipelines alone and stretched them end to end, they would go from Tampa to Los Angeles and back again, and you could keep on going all the way to the Keys. We've got 5,300 miles of pipeline. We've got thousands and thousands of manholes, fire hydrants, parts and pieces that make up a utility system. Again, I'll remind you that we are under-spending on our R&amp;R needs right now. We spend 40, and we probably should be at 57. System growth. I will tell you that at the rate that we're growing, and there's no indication to see that it's going to slow down, we will need new water and new wastewater capacity within the next four to five years. It needs to be in place in four to five years. Additional rate considerations? There's been a lot of talk lately about septic-to-sewer conversion. We have, and you will see in a subsequent slide, you will see that we have a pretty high density within our service area of septic tank communities. And we want to take a look at beginning the process of converting those over. Going back to one-water, I think you can make an argument that a septic tank may not harm, but I don't think you'll find anybody that says it helps. So if we're going to take a one-water approach to protecting our resources, we need to take a real hard look at the septic tank communities and convert those.
George, I'm sorry, can I just interrupt you a second? I want to go back to the comment you made above in terms of needing new water and wastewater capacity in south-central. Just to be sure, I want to understand, that's based on existing, entitled, and permitted?
Correct.
So that's just to serve everything that's been permitted? We're not planning to expand beyond that? So that's the pent-up demand that we can't really change, so?
Yes, sir. Thank you. And last, this item on low-pressure sewer system, is there a question?
Mr. Merrill, will you recognize?
Thank you. I couldn't get my button to work. Good point. Thank you very much. Because basically, we're out of water in south-central Hillsborough in about five years. Just wanted to make that additional point.
So our low-pressure sewer system, which serves Ruskin and Wy Mama?
Commissioner Olman, you recognize?
So you've indicated four to five years before we need another plant. What is the timeline on actually developing, building, and operating function on estimate?
If we got really serious about it, it would take us three to four years.
So we got a year to think about this? Okay. Just need to know. I mean, that's why, yeah, it's important for us to recognize that it's going to be in next year's budget as a starting point if we're going to address the need?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So the low-pressure sewer system, this is a system that went in Ruskin and Wy Mama 30 years ago. And at the time that it was going in, it was determined to be the most cost-effective solution to sewer-ing those communities. We've learned a lot about low-pressure sewer systems in the last 30 years. And what we found is that the cost per connection, per customer, is the highest that we have in our system. There are also some significant issues with the way it operates. And what we would like to do going forward is put together a plan to convert that to a combination of newer technology and/or conventional systems. So we talked a little bit about what the rate burdens are, the pressures in our system. And now I want to touch upon some of the efficiencies that we're doing because this is a good story to tell. We're looking at new technology. I'd mentioned that. Also, process improvements, how we operate our business, alternative energy opportunities, and then certainly safety. On the new technology side, recently, the Board approved acquisition for us to upgrade our customer account billing system. That's the Customer Cloud Services. And so we're taking a very antiquated billing system. We're moving it to the cloud. It's going to have some connectivity to other technology opportunities. And we're hoping that what that'll do is it'll improve the interface between our customers and their ability to see their accounts. I mean, who doesn't get a text message from their cell phone company that their bill is coming up? Or that they've run over data? Or from your electrical utility where they tell you, hey, there's a service outage? And they want you to know when you can expect it to come back online? Similarly, we want to have that opportunity to engage with our customer base. Let them see if they're using a lot of water. Let them see what their bill is coming up to be. We think that's going to be helpful. Advanced metering infrastructure, which is a technology that will eliminate our need to go into the neighborhoods and read meters physically, manually. It'll be a meter that transmit the meter usage into the cloud, connects with the billing system. That's going to help us be more efficient in our deploying of resources. We have a small army of people that go out and read meters every day. It's cars on the road. It's staff on the road. It's not an easy job. So we really like the way our new technology is shaping up on the billing side. Deploying resources, we've got approval recently to install GPS equipment within our fleet. What does that do for us? Well, we're going to connect that in with our work order system so that when staff is out on a particular job and they have a completion of one job, we can deploy the closest resources to the closest shop or job so that they're not having to come all the way back to a shop, get their next work order, and go back out. So we're really excited about what that will bring to the table. Process improvements. You heard a little bit, last year, I talked about our pilot bio-solids and yard waste composting initiative. That went over fantastic. It is a viable alternative to really throwing this material away. We've just received a construction contract to expand it to a full scale. So going from pilot to full scale, it's a wonderful amendment product. And again, it's a beneficial reuse to what was normally a waste product. Within our water treatment operation, Commissioner Merrill knows too well, we have some chemistry issues with our water. Nothing wrong with it, but it lends itself to stale water at times during the year. And I guess the easiest way to describe it is we had to flush a lot of water to remove the stale water, to get fresh water behind it. And so we bought this water, and now we're flushing it because we need to meet all the customer requirements. So if we can do some additional treatment, and Tampa Bay Water's working with us on this, if we can do just a little bit more treatment to it, we save water, we don't have to flush as much, our customers are happy, and we've saved a little bit of money. Plant operations, we're continuously looking at opportunities to improve what we do, be more efficient at what we do, and get the high-quality water out the door that we are striving for. Alternative energy, again, an opportunity to cut some of that TECO bill. We installed a pilot solar array at our Fawn Ridge Water Plant last year. It's been working wonderfully well. And we plan in the next CIP schedule to put a 2-megawatt solar array at our Val Rico Wastewater Plant. Looking forward to that. We're starting to convert our cars, not our heavy-duty trucks, but our passenger vehicles from a traditional gas to a hybrid and electric. Fleet's been really supportive with that. And our landfill gas, our landfill gas presently is flared. There's no beneficial use of our landfill gas. And we've got a project right now that we're envisioning to take that landfill gas and repurpose it either into electricity or some beneficial opportunity to reduce our leachate hauling and treatment. Safety. So safety is, you know, obviously, it's a huge deal, right? We want our employees to work safely. We want them to conduct their work in a manner that it doesn't cause any damage to the surrounding area that they're working in, and they don't cause any injury or accidents to themselves. What we have found is that by really focusing on a good, strong safety program, we've driven down accidents, we've reduced workers' comp cases, and that means, number one, it's a reduction in cost to the organization. Number two, our employees are able to come to work every day and not sit at home and be beat up or banged up. So we envisioned a program called SAFER. We want to work safer. And so SAFER is an acronym we kind of come up with, and it's had some good response. SAFER is a site awareness. So you stop and you look at your site before you begin your work. The A in this is assess any hazards that might exist. You want to focus on the work at hand. You want to execute the work. And then you want to review all the steps. SAFER has been so successful that our Human Resources Department is going to move that to the next layer up and introduce that to other departments as well. Going back to our service area, I'm going to layer this map. And I know you've probably already have seen the layers of existing customers and proposed customers. As we look at this, I'm going to focus really on that south-central area. Not that northwest isn't growing, but south-central in particular, just for purposes of this discussion, to give you the illustration. So now I'm zooming in to just the central and south area again. And this is going to be really our wastewater side. The attendant water side is just as strong a statement. So the first layer I'm going to provide you is really our existing customers. And we're looking at about 105,000 customer connections in this block. Everything south of the Alephaya goes to the South County Wastewater Plant. You've seen that plant on I-75. It's right there on the corner of I-75 and 674. That plant is a 10-MGD facility, 10-million gallons per day of treatment capacity. And right now, it's receiving about 6.6. I'm going to add a layer. So here are pending reservations. These are people that have put their building permit in, they've put their plans in, they are in some level of approval to go build something. What you see there over probably the next 10 to 15 years is an additional 6.6 million gallons of water, excuse me, 6.2 million for a grand total of 12.8. That's in the books right now. It's going forward. I'm going to add another layer. That layer is the RP2 discussion as well as the Wy Mama Village discussion. It's a little bit farther out, a little bit farther out on the horizon, but it does represent today a viable capacity that's necessary. Lastly, it's our septic tank communities. And our septic tanks are dense. You're probably looking at about 20,000 individual septic tanks just within this area. All told, we're looking at a total capacity need, you know, again, farther out in the horizon, but about 21, 22 million gallons. Over this past year, we've had one of our consultants engage in looking at what's the order of magnitude for our septic tank conversion program? How would we go about looking at which communities to do first? What's the sequence of events? And so, as you might guess, we want to pick those communities that are in the most flood-prone areas. And typically, that's where they are. So they're along the Alephaya River, some of the older developments prior to any of the large collection systems going in by either the county or the city. And so we wanted to have some kind of sequencing. At this point, I will tell you that almost every county in the state has some type of similar program going on in terms of looking at the septic tanks, looking at septic tank conversions. If we were to begin a larger-scale program, we would need to be looking at how it's going to be funded, what the portion is for the homeowner, how we would schedule that repayment. And I think one of the most essential components of this is we would have to develop a mandatory connection policy. If you put all of your infrastructure in and nobody connected, it would be a significant issue for us. A significant cost burden and no repayment. That would not be in keeping with our financial integrity model. Revisiting the rate pressures. So we've talked about our growth. We have continued growth. We've got continued R&amp;R needs. We need new facilities to handle the growth, both water and wastewater. We talked a little bit about the septic-to-sewer. What we would propose is probably a 500-home-per-year program. Similarly, for the low-pressure system, a 300-home-per-year. The low-pressure sewer system is a little bit more manageable opportunity because it's a smaller community, probably about 1,400 total LPSS systems. We could do that in four to five years. So now here's the shock and awe. If we look at a six-year program of the necessary increases in revenue to get us to a place where we're fully funding our R&amp;R, we've got our new capacity, we're engaged in these new initiatives, it's going to be about a 5% per year increase over six years. I did include in your package an additional slide that has the year-by-year increases. So it's really more along the order of $4.5 to $5 per month increase for the six years. So we've got a couple of options. These buckets are similar to buckets that you've seen in your stormwater and your wastewater, whether your stormwater and your solid waste analysis. And that is, we try to compartmentalize some of these things and what they mean. If we look at one additional opportunity to improve our revenue stream, it would be to revisit our impact fees. Our impact fees have not been changed in 20 years. And so if we look at our impact fees and make that adjustment, we believe there's going to be additional impact fees that we would charge. Reinstating the AGRF, putting that back in, that would gain us a little bit on that overall cost model and reduce the impacts to the average customer. Mr. Merrill and I talked about an all-in. What if we do it all up front? Instead of six years, we just bite the bullet, we tear off the Band-Aid, and we do it all upfront? And this is what that would look like. $87 currently is your bill. The adjustment on all the increases would be 14 upfront. And then we do index. I believe you probably received an email from me not too long ago where annually, we index our rates based on CPI. It covers a little bit of our operating costs. It doesn't cover everything. We would adjust that to cover all of our increases associated with inflation. So that brings us down a little bit in the six-year plan. And that concludes the overview.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We appreciate everything.
We just, you have no other presentations, right? Okay, so just Board questions, discussion?
Anyone? No? Well, speak up. Mr. Olman, you recognize?
My button won't cooperate with me. There is a...
There is a chart, a graphic, that has the, both the septic and the systems, as well as projected new service requirements based on, I'm assuming, reservation, pending reservation of capacity. Is that due to permits that have been issued by the county for future development outside of the service area?
That is all within the urban service area. Everything that I'm showing you is within urban service area.
Not the RP2.
Not the RP2. That's a completely different subject.
No, it's not.
I'm sorry.
It's absolutely a completely relevant subject because, obviously, the cost associated with providing that capacity would require debt or funding to the equivalent of, when we look at your typical residential slide, where you speak of $7 per month to fund capacity improvements. Is that, those capacity improvements we're talking about, is that the RP2 expansion?
Okay. So, when we put together our capacity expansion needs, we looked at what would we, where would we be 20 years from now? And so, that would take into consideration some of that RP2 area.
True, but it also assumes that we're going to continue a sprawl pattern that I'm not necessarily going to embrace.
I understand.
So, when there's still a lot of white on this map, you know, when we look at this wonderful illustration that shows, you know, not only our water service areas, but also our septic system areas, there's a lot of white in there that doesn't have anything in it. And if our future growth plans include maximizing density and in order to be able to afford effective use of resources for infrastructure cost, RP2 may not necessarily be where we need to go. I'm just throwing that out there saying...
Right. And so, that's why I said what I said before. I want to be very clear about what we're recommending, which put that chart up there again on the map. What we're saying is that we're, we need to size our facilities to take into account what is already permitted. When he said RP2 is a different discussion, what he meant is that's up to the board to decide what to do with RP2. He's just showing you what would happen if RP2 were approved. We're not recommending it.
I understand.
So, I want to be very clear about that. We're taking care of business as it is permitted on the books, as we know it, we're going to have to provide demand. We're no different than TECO in that respect.
Understood.
So, want to be very clear about what we're recommending.
I understand. And in your illustration where you estimate the cost it's going to take to address that growth, if, in fact, we work that direction, besides the 13th, the first bucket, the fund to fund operations, I assume operations would also include the coverage of operating the expansion to address the RP2. So, it's not $7 to debt to fund capital number is to actually build the facility and the capacity. Inside that 13 number to fund operations would include operating the expansion as well.
As well as all of our facilities.
Right, right. So, some portion of the 13 and some of the seven is dependent on what we do when it comes to RP2 in the future.
And the immediate need that we have in the next five years.
Four, understood.
If you took RP2 and pushed that to the side for a second, we have immediate needs right now.
Exactly. And I understand that, that we clearly have a renewal replacement issue that we must address when it comes to not only the septic systems, but ensuring the integrity of what we have already out there. But it looks like, based on your illustration, that shows both our system as well as the septic system, that there's some room for expansion within the lines, within that area that's more dense than not, let's put it that way. You know, there's, actually, and I believe it's probably in your district, Commissioner Miller, just south of the Falkenburg wastewater treatment plant, there's a whole area there that doesn't look like there's, it's either industrial or it's something, but there's a whole area there that doesn't appear to have not only service, but also septic tanks. Right? Is that, this Palm River has no services whatsoever? Fabulous.
No, Palm River is being, Palm River is being served by a system that the board approved that's being completed. Palm River has portable water and sewer.
It does?
Yes.
It's coming online, okay. All right. Thank you. Just in looking at this, I'm like, well, it looks like we might want to focus more, you know, towards minimizing the expansion of our growth footprint as a way of addressing the needs that we have, not only as it comes to water and wastewater, but more importantly, how we grow all the way across the board, whether it be housing transit, any of that. So, thank you.
Mr. Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I'll just start by following up on the RP2 Wyomama Village area and anything outside the urban service line, where I know some of our sewer systems have been laid already. And so, since the idea of the urban service line was not to have that happen, but it's underway at some capacity, I think it's important to, for us, to pull any policies that we have that have any kind of sewer systems being installed at this time or in the future across the urban service line to, first of all, rein that in. And so, I'm just wondering about that overall.
So, there are no service, is no service being installed outside the urban service area? Zero.
At this time.
At this time or plan to. What is, what does happen, and George can explain from an engineering point of view, we do run, when it's cost-effective and engineering-effective, we do run major pipelines through areas that are outside the urban service area to reach something inside the urban service area because it's less expensive than having to run pipes like this to stay inside the urban service area. That's simply a financial consideration, engineering consideration. That doesn't mean that we are planning to or are currently providing service outside the urban service area. Again, I want to be very clear about that. Okay? George, you can add to that if you like, but it's...
That summarizes it very well. And so, I would add to that, that some areas where we have infrastructure in exist, was put in prior to there being an urban service area. So, that was established in '93, '94 as a utility. We go back much farther than that.
So, how does it work in terms of, with this RP2 stuff that they've been putting before us, they're always saying, write in the land, you know, whatever it is that they're applying for, oh, this will have sewer and water?
And that, yeah, so that goes to the land use designation for RP2 and what entitlements or rights, I guess, go along with that RP2 area. So, if, as I understand it, and Adam can send you clarification if I'm wrong, but if the board were to approve the actual zoning for RP2, by virtue of how RP2 has been established, then we would have to provide water and sewer. So...
Okay. So, I think that that would be good to, I just think for other board members to look at that and disentangle that from a requirement of RP2, because I don't see that being attached to the kinds of things that are typically attached to a land use designation in terms of what entitlements you have for land and density and whatever else. I don't see why that should be an entitlement that is granted, and I don't want that to be. So, I'm going to, I'm going to work on that and figure that out, but I just wanted to be clear about that because that seems absolutely the case. In terms of, and I think it's really important that we're not investing in putting sewer and water outside the urban service area line. It's just not, it is not sustainable for the future. It doesn't make sense. Going along with that, as we talk about these installation of systems, one thing for areas that aren't developed, it just strikes me, and you had said it, where sometimes the lines aren't, don't make sense because they don't match up, or you have to do something else to get them. To me, it seems like we should be defining the pipelines, and therefore, that would define the grid. And I say this because it seems to me we shouldn't be accommodating in our piping system all kinds of squiggly roads and cul-de-sacs and all that that I see on the mapping, because it's not an efficient way to lay pipe and not, and a cost-efficient for the entire system. So, some people are paying a greater burden for the cost of pipes that are, you know, a convoluted pattern. It seems to me that in the future, as we lay, we should, if the developers want to follow it with a gridded road, okay, but it seems we should lay down the pipe and say, this is the pipe you're getting because it's at our expense and at the people that are already there, their expense. So, we shouldn't be paying for a more complex, costly system by letting them define where the roads go and how the roads go. We should be saying, this is what the pipe are willing to lay, and, you know, define that. Because in terms of cost and efficiency, this is, I don't know how that works, I'm sure it doesn't work that way, but it seems to me to make sense as a cost-efficient measure to, for us to define, and they can build along those lines if that's what they want.
Going forward, that would be the case, which you're describing is exactly a better, more efficient way to deliver service. Right now, what George is having to deal with is the status quo.
Right.
Which is a labyrinth of pathways, which is why whenever we can, we want to run straight pipelines, and sometimes, that actually does mean going briefly outside the urban service area just to keep the pipeline straight because we don't want to be. But, yeah, the only way to control for that in the future would be through land use, through the land development code.
It seems to be becoming the zoning part of it, because they can have the land use, whatever densities they have, but I think we should be defining from the start where the pipes go. And then, if they, you know, in a way that makes some kind of sense or something, but not, you know, to follow a convoluted, you know, cul-de-sac pattern, which is not, you know, efficient and not good. So, I'd like to, in the future, maybe understand that process better and know that we were doing that. I think that that makes sense as a sustainable option. The other questions I have are, I'd like to say I'm really, really proud and think it's great, the, and I've said this before, and I'm not sure everybody is aware, of the recycling program that we have where we mix the biosolids with yard waste, and I think we're doing that with, you know, you alluded to some of, I keep watching, I don't have those numbers in my head, but that, you said it's going to kind of like 100% type of program because what happened to that septic or that biosolids before is that they were either landfilled or incinerated or put in another place. So, I think the fact that they're being beneficially generated, not only saving us dollars and saving us all kinds of energy, it's, we're making money on selling that commercially, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't know if you want, but I just think it's good for the board to be aware of that. I think it's really good. In terms, I, as you know, I've been kind of very looking at septic and our septic issues for a time. So, do we have something in our future plan? Seems like we need this. We haven't had capacity in the county, as I understand, that for all of our septic or sewer, septic tanks that are going to be remaining or outside the urban service area or whatever, we haven't had a capacity for having that septic processed by one of our plants. That hasn't been an option. And so, what is going on with that?
Well, if we are, if we're able to put a new wastewater plant in as part of this growth and meeting the demands of the customers, we would include a septic receiving and treatment system as well. We would design that into the plant.
Okay, but that isn't part of it, anything yet?
Well, we don't have, we don't have authorization to proceed with a new plant right now.
Okay. I would just like to go on record saying I think that that would be extremely important for the future. The fact that we've had, you know, when I was trying to start, talk about and bring up the issue of the land application, one of the complaints was by some of the commercial vendors is that there, we in the county had no option, they had no option within Hillsborough County to process what they had removed from septic tanks but for land application or bringing it to the city of Tampa. So, I would think that that would be extremely important to put on our future, whatever we do. The other thing is, what about in terms, because can those plants also take the biocidal potaporti, portapotty septic?
We would look at that whole consideration. So, it wouldn't be just septic tank waste, but also the portapotty waste, yes.
I think it's really important that we end land application in Hillsborough County. So, I think it's important that we provide these options and make that available and know that we're doing our part to process our own septic and waste within the county confines of what we generate. I think that's part of a sustainable plan. So, I'm concerned about that. And I think that is at least part of my list. So, thank you very much, and I'll let someone else take it up from here.
Mr. Merlin, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. George, great presentation. Thank you very much. And I think what it boils down to is what's our plan of action going to be moving forward to help take care. I am very concerned about the septic to sewer issue and have expressed my thoughts to the leadership in Tallahassee, and they assured me that they were going to do something this session. Nothing got done. I know the governor's office has expressed an interest, but they have told me they are going to do something on this this year. So, I'll wait and see. But, put that aside, whether they do or they don't do it, I think, and I'm glad you put it in here, the monies to really get us on a program to convert. I think that, you know, we need to go into the future and not be in the dark ages with our customers. And I know Jan Doherty sent us that article today about failing septic tanks and degrading of water quality. I will tell you what makes me think of this, because back in 19, I think it was '97 or '08, they had a huge sinkhole out in the Riverview area, and there were a lot of septic tanks that were old and in very poor condition. And when the sinkhole happened, it was like a conversion of terrible and more terrible. You know, they just, they had to have bottled water, I think, for almost two months. It just could not be fixed because they had to fix the sinkhole, and then they had to fix this water quality issue. So, how are you going to, how many septic tanks are there total? Do you know?
Well, just in this south-central area, we're somewhere between probably 20 and 25,000.
Oh, okay. And how would you prioritize? Okay, say we approve, we come back to the board, we all say here today, you know, we think, move forward with, you know, the rate, the structure that you've represented to us. How would you prioritize?
Well, we have this report that our consultant has prepared for us, and they've taken a good stab at prioritizing the communities based on several factors, including what's the environmental risk, what's the exposure, the age of the communities, how easy it would be to retrofit the community. So, we've got a number of factors, and we've got that listing.
Okay. So, last week, we did the workshop on land use, and we talked about the different kind of development areas that we're targeting. I think we need to kind of overlay what's going on with septic tanks within those areas. Like, I asked them to take the whole I-US41 corridor from the Ala Fia down to, I guess, 674, that'd be Ruskin, Apollo Beach, and Gibsonton, and figure out what, because Gibsonton's not on sewer.
Correct.
And that's why it's so blighted along 41. And I'd really like to see that prioritized because there could be, there's economic development that can happen there. And if they're going to improve the corridor along Gibsonton Drive, I think this is an area that we could definitely look at. I mean, we were at a town hall meeting the other night for hurricanes, and there is a landowner that owns the shopping center there that used to have the U-Save in it, and he really wants sewer. I mean, and this is... landowner that owns the shopping center there that used to have the U-Save in it. And he really wants sewer. I mean, and this is a conversation we've been having for about 10 years. So I know it's expensive and I know we were in a recession, we couldn't even think about it back then. We couldn't raise our rates to even think about helping them. But I think we're in a position now where we can really do something to help these people and bring about economic development to these blighted areas. I mean, I, Ruskin, I don't know, it looks, it looks like Ruskin's okay, it looks like south of College, but I mean, it looks like there's sewage, I can't tell where 674 is on this map, but if the red mark is in Ruskin, then that's a problem. But I think we just have to look at also from an economic development and land use issue also, and they really need to be thought of together. So looking at that article about the degrading water quality from failing septic tanks, I think the state oversees that, don't they? The septic tanks?
Health Department has responsible charge for the septic tanks, yes.
The health department. So what information do we get from them about failed septic tanks? When they see, when they go out and check septic tanks, which I don't think they do really a lot of, if I remember correctly, when I was in the legislature, it's very sparse, their maintenance. But what do we do with that information? Do we act on it or?
We generally get a phone call about the time that someone's drain field has failed and then they're facing a significant cost to bring in a new drain field, which can be pretty pricey. I mean, depending on where you live and how it's constructed, it could be thousands and thousands of dollars. And so generally, when a septic tank drain field fails, we get a phone call, hey, can we connect into the county system? And so we do an economic analysis and we look at how far we have to extend the system, what is the customer willing to pay for ultimately in connecting in. And so we do connect people in and we have folks that turn their back on us to say it's too much.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the difference here is we're talking about a mandatory system. So what George is describing is a voluntary system, which is completely different.
Right.
If what we want to do is to make 180-degree turn for a variety of reasons, environmental, financial, it can't be voluntary. The reason being that to reach these 20,000 septic tanks means George is gonna have to start expending money to lay pipeline.
Right.
We don't want to spend money laying pipeline if we don't know that it's mandatory. So it's, you can't sort of be halfway in and halfway out. And that's, that's a major business decision, it's probably also a major community decision because not everybody is going to be pleased about mandatory septic connection, which leads to then, how would we accomplish it if it's mandatory and we're telling someone, you need to hook up? More than likely, they'll say, fine, county, or in this case, utility system, you pay for it. So there's all kinds of ways to do this, you know, you can have utility pay for part of it, you can set up an assessment program for residents, but in the end, it's going to be a difficult decision because it's not voluntary.
Right.
So in your numbers, your rate numbers, I can't remember when we discussed this, are you assuming that the entire cost of the conversion would be borne by the utility system?
So the numbers that we use were the fronting, fronting the money. And so we had to front the money to be able to accomplish the construction, but our plan would be to have infrastructure assessment units established.
For the full, for the full amount, yeah.
And we're seeing anywhere between 20 and 30 years being established by other counties and cities for that assessment timeframe.
So that's an important feature here. So when, when you show in your rate table, I forget, $5 a month? That assumes that then we would pay the full cost upfront with the utility system of converting, but then require everybody who's being converted to repay us over 20 years through an assessment program. So in that case, the resident is repaying us the full cost of converting. And there's all kinds of places in between, they could repay half, it just depends on the policy decision of the board. And so I don't think there's any particular best practice or rule, it's just whatever we feel constituents are able and willing to bear, what the system is willing to bear. But that's a significant cost and it's a, it's a major policy decision that we're certainly going to hear about from people, but you know, it is what it is. We've been talking about this as long as I've been around, 30 years, and it keeps coming up and going away and coming up and going away because it's a difficult decision to have with people.
But it does have a lot to do with water quality.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I think that's, that's what I care about, is somebody being able to say they can drink their water and not have what happened to Palm River coming in here with the jar, remember that?
That in Martha's.
I know.
Yeah.
Should have brought it here today.
But you don't want to bring that in here.
That's true, except what I'm, what I'm saying is a lot of people are not in that place.
I know.
A lot of people are on their septic and well systems and they're perfectly happy and their jar is not filled with dirty water.
Right.
But we're saying to them, you need to convert, you need to become accustomed to our system, and they're gonna say, why? My system's working fine, I like my water. So we're not talking about the Palm, the Palm River type situation, that's clear. I mean, that's a no-brainer, we just need to do those. The pushback and the filling of this room with people are going to be those, their systems are not failing, their systems are okay, and so then we need to decide, how does a policy actually work? Does the policy say you only are required to hook up when your system fails, which seems to be maybe a fairer place to be? So just a lot of, a lot of policy decisions that come with making that, that choice. But in terms of priority, I think what George is saying, we would go after the really, the really obvious bad systems first that are causing environmental damage and systems that are imminently failing, get those first because those just need to be done.
And then areas that have economic development opportunity, like Gibsonton, Apollo Beach and Ruskin, where there's a lot of red on the map?
I mean, that could be the second priority. So the first priority would be get the really bad stuff, second priority would be economic, I mean, however you want to do that as a board, we would probably need your direction on what is that priority. And then of course, you know, George showed you two different ways to pay for this, one is phasing in the higher rates over time, the other is just ripping off the Band-Aid and doing it now. If we ripped off the Band-Aid, we could start doing a lot more sooner than, than waiting. But again, that's, you know, a choice, so there's lots of sort of options in between, but I think clearly it is important.
It is, and I'm, I'm very sensitive to people that don't want to go off of septic, but they don't, a lot of them don't want to go off because they're afraid of the cost.
Yeah.
They think they're gonna have to shell out $20,000 because the people on Sims Road, where they have all that septic, they, they want it. I mean, I heard at a town hall meeting, there were 150 people there, and you were there, George?
Yes, ma'am.
They want it, but they don't want to pay $20,000 to get it done. I think if we went back to them and said, it's gonna be $5 extra a month on your bill, they would say, bring it on, you know, let's do it. So I think I, I guess that gets back to communications and outreach and education, how are we gonna, that probably have to be part of your plan.
Yeah.
And you're gonna bring this back to us? Is that what the process is gonna be?
If that's the board's wish, we would then bring back how we would implement it, give you some options on the financing part of it.
Well, I'm, I think we need to, I mean, I'm just, it's so, it's just so uneven in South County with the haves and the have-nots. And I just feel like we need to kind of level the playing field and get everybody, try to get everybody better quality water and move forward. I mean, I'm for the $118 a month, the six-year rate plan, and that's my thoughts. I don't know where y'all are, but I'm sure you want direction from everybody before we go forward, but I'll put my stake in the ground and say that's what I'm for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let me, let me say this, we plan this for 3 o'clock and we don't want to run over today because other people have schedules. So if you're gonna make your comments about what your plan is, do it quickly. So we have other members, we have four members in the queue already, so let's, let's be, ever my, Commissioner White, you recognize?
Well, George, Mike, allow me to be the first citizen that you hear from. I live on a private flag lot, I have soils that are indicative of Florida Sand Hill, I'm high and dry. I made a business decision 15 years ago to decline sewer services and install a septic tank. For all it's worth, I think it's wrong for the county to renege on that opportunity 15 years later. But with that being said, you know, and I'm subject to the will of the board here, just like all other citizens are. Christine, I don't need an answer right now, but I'll just ask you, looking forward, you know, whether or not the fact that I would be personally impacted by any decision would constitute any sort of a conflict of interest in, in voting, you know, I want to make sure that, that I'm above board.
Yes, understood, we'll look at it.
I, I certainly, certainly believe from a policy perspective that a situation like mine should be low on the priority list. And Commissioner Merman, I strongly support your endeavor to get Gibsonton hooked up. And in, and in my mind, you have a double whammy there. You have both environmental concerns and economic development concerns. You have some real issues there along the Highway 41 corridor. And of course, Gibsonton is, is sandwiched right there in between the Alifya River and Bullfrog Creek. So, you know, they're subject to flooding, they're in two watersheds, maybe it's all one watershed, but me as a layperson, I think of the two different water bodies as two different issues, but I support you there, wholeheartedly. So just, just, just realize as we're making decisions that I'm probably a low priority, okay? Mike, just for clarification, when you say you're not, you, you don't recommend that we approve any more RP2, I'd like clarification on that because, let me state for the record that I'm not wild and crazy about the RP2 land use category, okay? Never have been, but it's embedded in the comprehensive plan. So when we're sitting in this quasi judicial proceeding and the applicant, you know, meets all the requirements of the comp plan, we're hard pressed to say no on a rezoning in that situation. We wouldn't be on sound legal footing. So what, what do you mean by you don't recommend that we approve any more? Do you mean approve an expansion in the comp plan or approve rezonings or?
Oh, no, I didn't, I'm sorry if that's the way it was construed, I wasn't talking about recommending RP2.
Okay.
I think what I was saying is that our recommendation for expanding the plant capacity is based on existing entitlements and properties that are permitted.
Okay.
And, and I don't believe RP2 is currently approved. I don't, I don't think they're permitted yet.
What do you mean?
I don't think the RP2 developments currently are permitted, I might be wrong about that.
I think we have a lot of RP2 developments that are.
Are they permitted?
Yeah.
Well, in that case, then they would be.
Yeah, okay. And then the last thing, and I, maybe this is for another day, Mr. Chairman, because I don't want to, actually, I see who's in the queue, actually, these are three commissioners that I'd like to hear from, so that's great, they're already in the, in the queue. You know, I think the cat's out of the bag that I'm, I'm working on a rural enclave, a rural preservation enclave to bring to the board for consideration at some point, where, where you would see some large acreage tracts preserved for agricultural, recreational activities, certainly, you know, room for wildlife to move around. I would envision wells and septic tanks in an area like that. It would be low density, large lots, I don't think there's an environmental concern there. And frankly, I think it could be cost prohibitive to tell residents in an area like that that they have to hook up to water and sewer. So I see Overman, Smith and Kemp, I mean, you three are environmentally astute, you know, you, you have an environmental mindset, so I would just like to hear from you as to whether or not you think I'm on the right track there, you know, before I bring something to the board.
So the rest of us have a mental, mindset?
Well, you, you are, Mr. Chairman, I didn't mean to, to imply that you're not, but yeah, but, but yeah, certainly, certainly I'd, you know, love to hear from who's in the queue, but yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Okay, I'm green as it comes, okay, so I get it. Actually, my question was a little bit different, other than the green concept of making sure that we protect our areas and environment and build in a sustainable way. My question is, as it relates to what the school district's plan is, because it's my understanding, and please, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, that if, if a school gets planned, that takes the priority because they don't possibly go on septic, they are required to tap into our, our system. So for example, we have schools outside of the urban service area and we've provided services.
Correct.
To them.
Correct.
So I'm trying to figure out, when we do that, if that should occur again, you know, what is our plan for making sure that the surrounding areas tap into that system where it's, you know, if we have this septic to sewer conversion plan, if it's outside of the service area, but we have a line that goes there, what is the plan for encouraging them to continue, to connect, whether it's residential or commercial or otherwise? Because it doesn't seem, where I've seen the lines go, I'm like, okay, we got a line that goes way out here and there's no residential connected to it, but it seems like it only, it's only being served to the, I mean, this, the school is the only thing being served. So I'm trying to figure out, where do, where do our policies lie when we skip over a development in order to provide school with the service that's required by the law, apparently?
Really good question. And so we're obligated to reach out and provide the water to the school or the wastewater service? We are prohibited from connecting anybody else along the way. It's outside the urban service area, by comp plan, we're prohibited from connecting anybody else.
By comp plan.
By comp plan or statute?
By comp plan.
Well, then, we're gonna fix the comp plan. Because in order to effectively deliver services, having a rule that actually prohibits us from effectively delivering services makes no sense, in my mind, okay? And maybe it made sense to somebody, or we just didn't think about it. But as we build a growth plan, those kinds of issues need to be addressed in our plan so that we don't inadvertently cost ourselves more money or invest in areas that we're required to do, but it doesn't complete the sentence, you know? Because if we're, if we're looking at, and I heard your term AGRF, you know, we got that down to zero, if, you know, if there's a way that we can spread out the cost but efficiently deliver the services as those areas infill, to help those communities move to a place where they're not only more environmental sensitive, but we create a sustainable plan, that seems to be a good sort of policy to try to follow, in my opinion. And I'd like to see us identify those opportunities and then focus on those things as we develop this plan and the funding for it. Because going out to borrow the money to make not only the plant that we need possible, but to fund a re, sort of a reimbursement with the income that we can charge, the enterprise fund can charge to those that need to connect or spread that cost across the area to, to create a sustainable system, would seem to make sense to me, whether you're on septic or not. I, you know, people who use our roads don't pay for it as they use it, they all pay for it, whether or not they ride on that road or not. And I don't see why our water and septic systems should be any different. I understand your point, but, you know, you're not allowed to drive on 275 anymore, sorry, you didn't pay for it because you didn't have to. So, just as an example. But it's one of those situations where if we're gonna build a sustainable system for services for our citizens for the next 20 years, making sure that we're clear about how we're going to help them pay for it. And I'll use one quick example. We recently had a community come to us that wanted to run their utility systems underground to improve the reliability of the service and it not only makes it prettier, but also, you know, it's not sustain, susceptible to storms. And it not only makes it prettier, but also, you know, it's not sustain, susceptible to storms. It's above, you know, it's below ground. And so there was a TIF, I believe it was, or something was put into place to help pay for that. But there was no provision for connecting to the house. So there was still a cost associated between the service that was done and the cost to connect to the house that would cause some hesitancy to buy in. So whatever we do, we don't want to do that. We want to make sure that we look at the whole cost. We want to make sure that we actually spread the cost across many so that it actually makes sense to encourage the protection of our environment by moving off of septic systems and creating a conducive plan. So, thanks.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. So the low pressure system in Ruskin, there, there's a couple of problems with Ruskin. And one is that they're on the low pressure system. And, and so in the town center on 41 and, and 674, where we had in our community plan envisioned a town center, it's still a low pressure system, which is really discouraging businesses. Businesses who would like to locate refuse. Restaurants can't be there. The residential, it, the whole area is on this low press. I just watched a neighbor of mine get changed from septic to this low pressure system. And it's, it's just some freaky third world nightmare of digging up your septic tank and then putting another septic tank in your front yard of a subdivision, having the box on a pole in the middle of your yard with a light on top, two manholes, another cement cover of something else. Your whole yard is taken up with this Rube Goldberg machine of taking your waste away, which goes out every time the electricity goes out. It's useless in a storm and, and they go out anyway, even if electricity doesn't go out. It's a mess for people in Ruskin. But the way the situation is there is you can keep your septic, Commissioner White, you can keep your septic until it fails. Then it's mandatory. You cannot do septic anymore. You have to do this horrible thing. So, a horrible and expensive thing. So, you know, maybe that's where we, I, I, I know that people in Ruskin would be thrilled to say you can keep your septic as long as you want to, but when you, when it fails, which they're all pretty old by now. And these are residential, small lots, low lying. So, you know, they're a problem in storm and flooding situations as it is. A lot of people would like to switch out anyway. And, and then when they do, they could switch to this new and modern system that everybody else enjoys. Is that a possibility?
I'm going to use you as my spokesperson because that's exactly what we want to do.
Yes, I, I, I really believe that you will not see Ruskin here if you use me as your spokesperson. And, and Why Mama too. They're the other area that is on that.
Let me share with you that we, we absolutely share your concerns. We're not happy with the system either. So we, we've been looking at the conversion. Again, it is a matter of the funding to be able to make it happen.
Yeah, so I, you know, I think people would be happy to, to have that situation to, for, for the cost of it. And, you know, looking at the cost of getting our whole system up and running, you know, certainly put me down for yes, let's add the AGRF fee that was only reduced, only taken away to, in the time we needed to encourage growth. Now, I mean, growth is happening at a, at a fine pace and we don't need to, to let them off the hook of paying their fair share and making it subsidized by our county water waste payers. So yes, to, count me as a yes to raising impact fees and, and reinstating the AGRF fee so that as we increase our, our rate payers' fees to increase services, everybody's paying their fair share. Let's see, the urban service area, of course, everybody knows I'm a no to expanding the urban service area. And there, there is though, a little bit of drinking water that was sent south of the Little Manatee River, which is the urban service area boundary, right about 24th at Camp Bayou.
It was a mobile, mobile home park?
Yes, and I remember fighting against that because the excuse used was that, uh, they were fighting some saltwater in, in
Intrusion.
intrusion, which is really far inland and my sister's all the way out there at the bay and we're not having any saltwater intrusion. So I don't, I, I don't really understand how they were having saltwater intrusion. And what happens then is the same thing that happens with whenever you, you extend urban services outside the urban service area, like to the school, Strawberry Crest, I think it is, then people start saying, well, you've got the services here, why can't we hook up? Well, now, you know, whether you change the comp plan or not, you've expand, you're expanding the urban service area if you let people hook up. And then if you're going to do that, well, why do it to low density? It's not cost, so cost effective. So you should have higher density. So now you're expanding the urban service area for real with suburban densities outside of this area. So that's the danger moving forward. I mean, whether or not, whatever we decide to do with the Strawberry Crest area, I'm not discussing that right now. I'm just saying, whenever we let the camel's nose under the tent here or there, we're inviting the whole camel to come in. So, um, yeah, and I'm against expanding the urban service area boundary for real or for all intents and purposes. Like, keeping the line there, but just doing development there. So I'm going to be watching real, I'm very pleased to be invited to be included in the discussions, but I'm going to be watching very carefully to make sure that whatever happens south of the Little Manatee River is not a de facto expansion of urban development outside the urban service area. And, but, you know, I know you want to maintain rural character, so I'm really looking forward to working with you on that. Question, new technology, could that, when you're talking about text messages to our customers, I'm hoping that's going to include boil water notices. Remember Sandy, I was your constituent and calling your office like three times, we had boil water notices out in my area. So it would be great to have that by text message.
The vision is to be able to provide those kind of notifications.
And when it's on and when it's off, and when you're back on instead of, you know, a little notice hang on your door. So wrapping up, you know, for the questions that Mr. Merrill had, I'm for the, I'm for the rate increases. I agree with, you know, making our serv, I think this is the time to make our services 21st century and cleaner and cleaner water and better service for everyone, even if it costs a little more. As long as we are making everyone pay their fair share, including the development community and, and the septic conversion for environmental reasons, as well as a better service for our customers and, and commercial economic development. I'm a big yes. Thanks.
Commissioner Keppe, you recognize?
Thank you. I knew that you would get to the low pressure system in Ruskin, so I didn't. But as I was an aide here back in 2003 to 2006, it's one of the first ways that I met Commissioner Smith, bringing up troops of people from Ruskin and heard about that incessantly, about how horrible it was from lots of people. And at the time, we were told over and again by staff here that there was no inadequacies with that system. And so I think it's really high time that we did something. But I'm, I'm thinking too, and along 41 is so obvious to me. But it, it seems to me too, that by putting in the system, we could expect some density increases that also might then pay and make the system, not just the people that are there, but the people that can connect to the system and make it valuable to, you know, use. I think we probably have to look at some options in terms of how we would make this conversion or make it be paid for. We haven't quite seen, I think, enough. But I would, as Commissioner Smith described and Commissioner White, in terms of people who have now adequate septic and be given, I mean, maybe we can just look at some options on transitioning and how that transition could go. It strikes me that the $5 a month, when I computed out and it only is 120 a year and that, you know, over 10 years is just $1,200, doesn't sound like it would do what needed to be done, so that it would.
So let me just clarify that. So that would be the increase on your monthly bill. The, the capital expense still has to be dealt with.
Right.
So if, that would be an assessment, that would be a, a different.
Right. That, that, and so I think that just, you know, to be clear and straightforward, we have to like, look at that a little more and try and figure out how that could go. But I certainly think that we should be doing that totally within the urban service area. And 41, as you said, makes so much sense environmentally. It's on the water. I mean, these places are places that we should be looking at first. Also, the big empty area, I know that's Progress Village and parts of it are, or all of it is being done there, but I don't know yet what exactly. It seems like there is a lot of potential out there for where we should be laying and doing pipes. And that's again, why I talk about not doing it outside the urban service area. Do it inside the urban service area where, where we already have densities. I'm also wondering, your point well taken about the schools, but honestly, I, I don't know where in the comp plan or how we do this, that, you know, we just, you know, the schools will have to start putting inside the urban service area where there is infrastructure in place, not, because then we can just break the entire urban service area. If you, if you go by the logic that whatever they put a school, wherever they decide to put a school, we just have to pipe to it, then just forget even having an urban service area. So I think that that has to be looked at and I'm concerned about the school that's already been put out there and already has promises, you know, obviously. But, you know, I, I, if, if that's the case, and I like the policy of like not doing anything around or using those pipes in any other way, and to your point, Commissioner White, I say yes, septic and low densities, yes, that's the way to do it. Because any other thing is cost prohibitive and doesn't make sense. You do this stuff inside the urban service area and that should be your distinction. So again, I'm all for the, whatever we need to do to make this work, the impact fees, the AGRF, the whatever, whatever. I just, I just think we need to see more of specificity about a plan and how to move forward in a way that makes the most economic sense and does some, you know, the most sustainable economic sense and the, the best way we can do it moving forward.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
I just actually have two questions. So it's my understanding there is no fee or no requirement for annual inspections or periodic inspections of septic systems to determine failure rates. Is that correct?
I'm not aware of any. But then again, we don't manage septic tanks.
Well, the state does, and there's no fee for doing so.
I'm not aware of any.
And there's no real active activity on it or incentive on that unless we find or someone has reported it's failing. Is that correct?
Let me say this. For years in the legislature, there was legislation that was filed to inspect septic tanks, even inspect fire hydrants, and they went nowhere.
Okay.
Nowhere. So it's probably, I'm almost, there's nothing in law that requires that at all.
They weren't very environmental friendly then either, so.
That's the legislature.
We can see where we go with it. But, but to, to the point, in your illustration, based on your, you know, your estimate of fees and where we're going, it's showing a, a septic to sewer connection goal of 500 homes a year. Based on the 25,000 homes you say we already have out there that are on septic, that's going to take us 50 years.
At that rate, it would.
Five zero, fifty
Yes, ma'am.
years to replace our current septic's systems. So whatever policies we put into place, we can't have that go any longer than then. I mean, we're, we're talking about growing for the next 20 years. It'll take us 50 years to fix the problem we have now. So continuing to allow septic systems to be put in, except for maybe for the exclusion of environmental wildlife conservatory lands where that conservation piece is owned. Or when we talked about our, what was it, the TDM, T, the
TDR.
T, that, that's service. If that, if they've transferred the development rights, they might be permitted to do a septic system instead. That would be the only way that we would actually be able to stop the hole we've dug ourself in, that we're going to have to try and figure out how to dig ourselves out. But 500 a year isn't a goal that's sustainable, honestly. Because those systems are going to fail before 50 years.
Yeah, it's more a function of what we're willing to charge. So you're, you're right. It's just that at a certain point, you know, we, if that were the only thing we were trying to fix and then we could probably do it much more quickly. But because we've got all these other things that are going to add to the fees, we were just trying to be, you know, aware of that. But a lot of that goes to how it's financed because, you know, as we were discussing before, the $5 per month septic to sewer is a charge fully borne by all of the rate payers in our utility system. So if instead, or in addition to, we were to say that folks who are on septic now would have to become part of an assessment program and that's the way that we would fund it, then we could certainly do many, many more every year.
Than the 500 a year.
Because then it's not the rate payers or customers who are bearing the full cost. It would be a shared cost and, and those folks would be paying an assessment on their tax bill to convert, you know, paying a share of the cost on their tax bill.
Okay, and we are preempted from doing any inspection cost and fee, fee system?
We are, yeah.
We are, okay. All right, thank you.
Our last commissioner, before we go to next steps, is Commissioner White. Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you. What does South County Career Center, south of the Little Manatee River, do with their sewage?
I don't know.
Okay. That could be a model to look, look to if it's a, if it's a quality model, you know, for, you know, for any schools that are necessary in the future outside the urban service area. They probably don't have the enrollment of, of a traditional high school, so that would be a factor to look at.
I'll check.
You know, I'd love to know what their model is to see if we can emulate that for future schools outside the urban service area.
Commissioner Merman.
Hey, this is my only second time I press my button. Okay, I just have to ask a quick question. I know the capital size is not addressed in here, but that's an important consideration. So can you, I mean, at your, your level within staff and with the executive team, just discuss, like in the CIP program, what an investment would look like in the CIP or what a grant program would look like or something, especially in the economic development areas. I'm just trying to, I know, I, I'm not saying that we should pay for somebody's hookup. That's not what I'm saying. But I'm looking at maybe a shared cost type system where if it's $20,000, 10,000 of it would be in our CIP and multiply that times 500 homes a year, that would be, you know. I, I'm just asking if you could please look at that
Be happy to do it.
and include it when you come back with your program.
I, I think you mentioned a little bit earlier, the, the governor has recently authorized
Yes, he has.
increased funding for septic tank elimination programs. And so there may be more and more money available through that. We'll, we'll look at some options and see what's available.
I, I'd like for you to do that because people in South County, most of them are of median average incomes and I, I don't think, or can they, can we use that, use the MSBU system that we have where they can have a further assessment on their bill to pay for the hookup?
That's what we would be suggesting.
I think that would be, I mean, we're really lucky that we put that system in place. So, thank you.
Commissioner White, you recognize?
George, what did I say the name of that school is?
You said South County Career Center.
Okay, I thought I may have accidentally said Simmons Career Center, but it is South County Career Center. Thank you.
Mr. Merrill, next steps.
Yeah, George, could you put up that slide? This one? I don't see a page number on here, this one.
Right here.
Yeah. So, here's what I've got in keeping track. There's five things. We would bring back a rate resolution for the board's consideration, increasing rates for this full program that's shown here, which includes the adjustment for impact fee increases and reinstating the AGRF. And we would, we would bring that back as a phased-in program. So that would be one action we would bring back at a regular board meeting, a rate resolution. Secondly, to start an impact fee rate study for water and sewer impact fees. Third would be bringing back a resolution to reinstate the AGRF charge. Fourth would be to bring back a detailed plan and options for septic tank conversion, converting septic tanks to our utility system, including a financing plan for residents like the MSBU assessment program. And the fifth would be a detailed plan for converting the low-pressure sewer system, putting those customers on our water and sewer system, and also a financing plan for that as well. So those would be the five things we'd be bringing back to you shortly. So if that makes, is that, yeah?
Any questions on that? Oh, no, well, don't say any, no. Go ahead, very good. With that, we're done.
Thank you.
You're getting quicker.
Hey. This group can learn.